I'd like to call a meeting to order, please rise. Just ask if we could have a moment of silence, keep those police officers that were killed in your prayers, and all law enforcement that they come home safe, along with our troops as well. Thank you. Dennis, pledge?
For the liberty to defy from the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Publics Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-10 has been compiled within and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Here.
Freeholder Valente.
Here.
Freeholder Kenny.
Here.
Freeholder Polos.
Here.
Freeholder Tamara.
Here.
Freeholder Valente.
Here.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Here. We have some recognitions.
Yes, recognizing the Farmer of the Year Eric Haig, and recognizing the Volunteer of the Year Roger Boutier.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Valente.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Polos.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara.
Yes.
Freeholder Valente.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. We have some correspondence.
Each freeholder has been provided with a list of correspondence received by the clerk's office since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file in the office of the Clerk of the Board for reference.
Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamara, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we have minutes for approval.
Motion to approve the minutes.
So moved. Second. Sorry.
Minutes of the meeting of June 16th, and invoices meeting July 7th.
Yes. Motion to approve.
Motion by Freeholder Tamara, second by Freeholder Valente, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Valente.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Polos.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara.
Yes.
Freeholder Valente.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. For the public hearing and final adoption.
Any more orders, Freeholder?
Notice of this public hearing was published in the Home News Tribune on June 23rd, 2016. This public hearing was authorized at a meeting of the Board of Chosen Freeholders held on June 16th, 2016.
Clerk will read ordinance number 16-003 by Tyler Ome.
An ordinance authorizing the guarantee by the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, of the payment of principal of and interest on the county guaranteed capital equipment and improvement revenue bonds issued by the Middlesex County Improvement Authority in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $9,150,000, and authorizing a public hearing to be held Thursday, July 21st, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Authorizing publication thereof consenting to such financing determining certain other matters in connection therewith.
At this time I'd like to declare the public hearing open, does anyone have any comments on this?
I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Motion to close by Freeholder Tamara, second by Freeholder Valente. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 16-003 on final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Valente.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Polos.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara.
Yes.
Freeholder Valente.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes.
Notice of this public hearing was published in the Home News Tribune on June 23rd, 2016. The public hearing was authorized at a meeting of the Board of Chosen Freeholders held on June 16th, 2016.
The clerk will read ordinance number 430 by Tyler Ome.
A loan ordinance of the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey approving and authorizing the entering into execution and delivery of a loan and security agreement with the Middlesex County Improvement Authority for the undertaking of various 2016 capital improvements and the acquisition and installation as applicable of various equipment with an estimated cost of $5,725,000. The cost of such improvements and equipment to be financed through the assurance of county guaranteed capital equipment and improvement revenue bonds, Series 2016 of the Middlesex County Improvement Authority, and authorizing a public hearing to be held Thursday, July 21st, 2016, at 7:00 PM, and authorizing publication thereof.
At this time I'd like to declare the public hearing open, does anyone have any comments on the public hearing?
I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Motion to close by Freeholder Tamara, second by Freeholder Valente, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 430 on final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Valente.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Polos.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara.
Yes.
Freeholder Valente.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. Reports of freeholders, Freeholder Ken Armwood?
No.
Thank you. Freeholder Deputy Director Carol Valente?
No report this evening, Director.
Thank you. Freeholder Charles Kenny?
I'll break the streak, Director, I have a couple items. But they'll be quick. The county audit is before us today for approval. Once again, there was no recommendations from the auditor, and that reflects on the operation that's being run by Mr. Pruitt and all those in our finance and all the other departments, as they stay within the rules and guidelines provided them for expenditures of funds and intake of funds. The other item I have is the bonds that we just approved. Once again, it's the county using our AAA bond rating to help our local towns purchase the items that they need. The benefit to the towns is that there's no down payment needed, and also that they're saving with our bond rating by getting it at a cheaper rate. So, that is the second item. The last item I have is the brochures are out for the New Jersey Senior Olympics. As many of you know, Pat Tremetta and Frank St. Marie were here, we gave them a resolution acknowledging the senior Olympics. I believe they also taped a show for our county programs. If you're interested in the senior Olympics, like I said, this year I believe the oldest participant's going to be 100 or 101. So, it runs from the age of 50 up through whatever age the top age is. It goes by five-year increments, so you would be competing with somebody within your five-year range, and there's many different games or activities that you can participate in. And if you want, you can see at the bottom there, it says NJSeniorOlympics.com, you can go there for more information. And that's all I have, Director, thank you.
Thank you. Freeholder H. James Polos.
Just one quick item, Director, our reentry task force met this morning, and we continue to make great progress in trying to develop our thread program, as we call it, to develop opportunities for those who are coming out of our county incarceration system. And pleased to announce that in August, through a great partnership that we've developed through our correction facility and the Board of Social Services, we'll be able to actually prescreen individuals before they're let out of prison to make sure that they're eligible for whatever services they may be eligible for. This is going to hopefully reduce recidivism rate, enhances public safety in our county. We had a great speaker come in today, Bob Cantor from New Jersey Parole Board, to talk about some employment opportunities that we're able to create, and also are looking to create a in-house educational video through the Department of Corrections, so that we can educate the inmates in the process of reentry, how to re-acclimate and re-assimilate into society. Thank you.
Freeholder Paulos, Freeholder Charles Carroll.
Well, I know Freeholder Valente and Freeholder Armwood yielded their time to me, so I will take up their time this evening. Sorry. Well, we are in our final play of this year, which is the South Pacific, which begins on July 27th and runs through August 6th, and there's no show on July 31st. Our Little Mermaid show, we had 12,675, and two days that we started at 7:30, we had our largest turnouts. So that shows you that people want to come out a little earlier. Sister Act had 8,013, but we did have two rainouts. We also are reminding our servicemen and women who are serving our country as they now can call and have their immediate families come to the show for nothing. We do have three special shows of the South Pacific. August 1st is Veterans of WWII and the Korean War, and so far we have 24 signed up, and we have a gentleman called Charles Noly. Charles is 99 years old. He's a supporter of our Plays in a Park, I don't think he's missed a play in the last 20 years, maybe more. I will ask him when I see him on August 1st. But he was also a Tuskegee Airmen. On his first mission over Germany, now they were the escorts for our bombers, they shot down 10 Messerschmitts. They were the escorts that were requested by our bombers when they flew over Germany. And they never lost a plane from another German shooting them down. They may have lost them from ground fire, but they didn't lose them because they protected them that well. And it became that the pilots would request that the Tuskegee Airmen be their escorts when they flew over Germany, that's how good they were. They trained for over two years, and you know, they really became great pilots. He's really a great person to talk to, I can't wait to speak to him and introduce him at the Plays in a Park, August 1st. August 2nd is our Vietnam Veterans, which seems to be the most popular night. We ran out of reserved seats, and we're putting extra seats in there. We have 36 signed up so far. And on August 3rd, well, all other veterans, we have 12 signed up, and you know, there's still more calling and wanting to come. Please call Jackie Neal at 732-745-3936 to reserve your seats, I'm really looking forward to that, and I hope a lot of our freeholder members can come too that night. It's going to be, we're also going to be doing some patriotic songs, we're going to do a Star Spangled Banner before we start, and we're going to try to introduce every one of them while we're there. Don't forget our free concerts in the park at the new Ratten Bay Waterfront Scarborough Fair with Simon and Garfunkel, Experience Wednesday, July 27th, 6:30 to 8:30, rain or shine. And we'd also have concerts at Spring Lake on Sunday, 6:30 to 8:30, our Warren Park on Sunday, 6 to 9, I'm sorry, 6 to 7:30, and our Thompson Parks on Wednesday, 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM. All our playgrounds are finished at Thompson's Park, so if you get an opportunity, bring your children over there, they're awesome. And we're starting to replace our playgrounds at Ford's Park and King George Post Road and Ford's, and two playgrounds at Warren Park and Medwick and Carteret, and Warren, I'm sorry, Ratten Bay Waterfront Park and South Amboy. And don't forget to visit our Middlesex County Greenway, you know, it's a great place to jog and walk and have fun. And we are accepting applications, beginning to receive for the Fall Conservation Corps. Please contact Scott Myler if you're interested, 732-745-3064. Couple Wednesdays ago, June 29th, we opened our dog park. Well, not a "we" open our dog park, Edison and Matson opened their dog park, the county was involved in building it. I can't thank Rick Lear enough, we've been working on this for three years, I think, hundreds of emails, many site visits, many after, many meetings at night, whether in Edison or Matson, Rick was there. Can't thank you enough for running this job, you did a fantastic job. We've had to put more bag, poop dispenser bags there because we keep running out of them, that's how popular the park has become. We've heard nothing but positive responses from all the dog owners who've come to use the park. Matter of fact, the Matson Mayor said, he said that's the best responses he's received from anything he's done in town so far, you know, it's putting this dog park in there. I want to thank the Dog Park Committee, especially the two Girl Scouts, Amy Hoover and Abigail Brooks, they were the two Girl Scouts that started the petition to get the dog park. Lenny Zino, who I went to high school with, Gary Vince, Larry, Lenny oversaw the job, Gary Vince, who did the paving, you know, our paving crew, our striping crew, Bill Worth, Jeff Henderson, who did our site work, two public works people, one from Matson, one from Edison, Anthony Rosalino, Fred Hall, Mayor Lanky, Mayor Peter Camarano, and Mayor Tom Vahala, who were all involved in this process. It's great to build something and see the use that we get out of, that people get out of it, and we had a huge part in that. So I want to thank everybody who played a part in that. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Freeholder Blanquita Valente?
Thank you, Director. From the Department of Community Services, I'd like to remind everyone about the Middlesex County Prescription Drug Discount Card, which helps lower drug costs for people who pay full cash price for their medications. Every county resident, regardless of their age or income, is eligible to participate in the program. The card is available free of charge and was developed at no cost to the county. People who use the card can expect to save 10% to 20% of the cost of name brand medications, and even more off for generic medications. A discount card was sent to every household last year. If you need a new card or would like additional information, please call the county's partner, ProAct, P-R-O-A-C-T, at 877-776-2285. Along with the county's Office of Aging and Detable Services, I'd like to invite residents to attend the Middlesex County Senior Citizen Art Exhibit at the Studio Art Gallery at Middlesex County College Performing Arts Center. The exhibit is open to the public from July 18th, few days ago, to August the 11th. This is a wonderful opportunity to see the talent and creativity of our older residents displayed in a wide variety of mediums. I've attended every year, and it's incredible to see the talent we have. Finally, Middlesex County Clerk Lynn Flynn has announced that all passport acceptance agencies, that all passport acceptance agents within the county's passport division will attend a federally mandated passport recertification training program under the direction of the United States Department of State on Thursday, August the 18th. During this program, employees will be instructed on new passport regulations and on their individual obligations as acceptance agents. Due to this training, the Middlesex County Passport Office will be closed for passports and veteran service cards on Thursday, August the 18th. Passport and veteran's card services will be available the next day, August the 19th. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. I just have a few comments I would like to wish from Middlesex County going to the Olympics, US, the Olympics in Rio, Lori Hernandez from Old Bridge, Dagmar Wozniak from Avonel, and Colton Brown from Piscataway, and all New Jersey Olympians and all US Olympians that are going, representing the United States, I wish them all the best, and I'm sure they'll make us proud. I'd also like to thank the Parks Department, especially Tracy Reed and the Health Department for the softball tournament that was this past weekend for pancreatic cancer, and they raised over $3,500. Okay, Mr. Kelso, any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
This time I'd like to open a meeting up to public on any resolutions listed. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, I'm Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick. I'm the editor of a newspaper, community newspaper, as you know, in New Brunswick Today. And the first one I want to ask about is 1088, at the top of page eight. This is for Mr. Arthur Haney to attend an educational conference. Isn't it true, though, that Mr. Haney is going to be replaced on the tax board, that Governor Christie's appointed somebody to replace him?
I haven't heard anything about Governor Christie appoint, changing his appoint, or putting someone else in his position, I haven't heard that.
Okay, I believe it's awaiting the Senate's approval, but Mr. Haney might not be on the tax board much longer, and I think-
Maybe you have a pipeline right to the governor's office then?
Just, no, just a press release.
Oh.
But, but I do, I do think that the tax board could use some education. This is a quote from the Division, from the NJ Department of Treasury, says, "The Division of Taxation is taking action because of repeated failures by the Middlesex County Board of Taxation to provide proper oversight. Members of the Middlesex Board have demonstrated an astonishing lack of competence by ignoring their constitutional obligation." And it goes on and on, it's rather unusual for such strong language to be used about our public officials, and basically, Middlesex stands alone as the only tax board to not require towns to do any involuntary revaluations over the past two decades, and can you, can you tell me what's wrong with the tax board? Why are they being singled out? I'm glad Mr. Haney's going to get some education, but what about the other members? What about the future of the tax board?
Well, I'm sure when the opportunity arises for other tax board members to go to seminars, I'm sure that they take the advantage of those opportunities. You know, the tax board makes their recommendations to local communities when they have to do a revale, and then, as you read, like I read in the paper, that the mayor of certain town said that he's concerned about sandy recovery money and sandy damage that was done to different houses or homes or real estate in the town, and that's why they want to hold up. I think maybe it might be a good idea, maybe you might want to ask the mayor, why, in that town, why they don't want to do a revale. I can't answer why they don't want to do a revale, that's something, you know, home rule.
Am I correct?
Yes.
Am I correct that we can't force them to do the reevaluation? At the end of the day, it's up to the town. No matter what the governor's office says, no matter what the state says, we can't, as a county board, we can recommend it, but we can't force them to do the reevaluation.
Well, what about the tax board? The tax board can't?
No, that's, that's what I'm speaking about.
Okay, okay. I'm still learning about that, I don't know much about it, but figured I'd bring it up, what I knew. Next one I want to ask about is 1155, on page 15, what's going on with the Elks Lodge? Why are, why is the county still renting there? What purpose is it serving? I guess they have sheriff sales, or is there any other use?
Primarily the sheriff sale's still going on there, and in some instances, we do use some of their conference space for meetings.
So, what used to be the planning board offices is still being rented and used?
That's correct.
And, and how does this price compare to the old price? $1,000 per month, is that the same price that county's been paying?
I don't recall the number, we can get that, but it's much higher.
Oh, so it's a discount?
Oh, a significant discount.
Okay, thank you. And is there any expectation of when, if or when the county would stop renting there?
Expectation's by the end of the year, providing that we find alternative space for the sheriff sales.
Thank you. And then the last ones I have to ask about are prosecutor here. I'm glad that the full freeholder board here is here tonight, because, you know, I've asked about this before, I've brought it up, you know, like for instance, Mr. Haney's going to go to an educational event, his name is in this, and it says who's going, and they actually asked permission before the event. But here I see several, you know, prosecutors' employees going to attend, you know, Atlantic City Conference, or annual training, stuff like this, and the officers or the employees are not identified. And I've brought this up before, and Freeholder Polos gave me a very logical, sensible explanation. He said, you know, when you're in law enforcement, you might not want to advertise when you're going to be out of town, and you know, that your, you know, family and children might be, you know, might not have you in the house for a weekend, and that makes total sense. But then why, on earth, won't you say who attended these things that already happened? You know, for instance, you say, in Resolution 1245, attendance by a prosecutor's agent happened on June 21st.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville, I answered this question to you numerous times, this is as far as the integrity of the safety and the security of the investigators that the prosecutor feels strongly about. Thank you.
About us not knowing what skills they have. Could I hear from Freeholder Polos on this?
You're out of order. Anyone else from the public?
Move the close of public portion.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Tamara, second by Freeholder Valente, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, is there a motion to adopt? I'm sorry, Mr. Kelso, do we have anyone that has any separate agenda items that need to be considered separately?
Freeholder Director, I'd like to ask that item number 16-1156R be separated.
I know to 1156.
That's it, that's okay. Mr. Kelso?
Yes, Freeholder Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt the consent agenda consisting of Resolution Number 16-1052 through Resolution 16-1253 excluding Resolution 16-1156 to be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Tamara, second by Freeholder Valente, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Valente?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Polos?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valente?
Present, not voting.
No, no.
This is the regular agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
And now, Freeholder Director, would be appropriate to consider the Resolution 16-1156 excluded by both Freeholder Armwood and Freeholder Valente.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Tamara, second by Freeholder Valente, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Present, not voting.
Freeholder Valente?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Yes.
Freeholder Polos?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valente?
Present, not voting.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes. At this time I'd like to open up the meeting to the public on anything that they would like to speak on. State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I just want to follow up on something I asked about it a couple meetings ago. Have you had the chance to speak with the New Brunswick Mayor about offering parking for people who want to attend this meeting?
In fact, I did have a discussion with the mayor, quite lengthy at that, and he was very receptive to consider it. He said he was going to review it with his administration, and then he would get back to me. So at this point, it's, I would imagine that he's still reviewing it with his team, and he'll get back to me as soon as he can, I guess.
Super, thank you very much for, for following up on that. I, you know, have to bring up the mass protests that have been happening here in New Brunswick, calling for transparency from the prosecutor's office. As you probably know, on April 9th, a young man was shot and killed by Franklin Township Police Officers in the city of New Brunswick, and the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office is in charge of the investigation. They have not even identified the officers who killed this man, let alone the circumstances under which it happened. It's my understanding, according to published reports, that those officers are back to work with their badge, with their gun, at the Franklin Township Police. I understand that, that you don't have full control over what the prosecutor does, but I think this board should take note that people are not happy about this, that there were 200 people outside the prosecutor's office today, that there were even more people just a few weeks ago marching all over New Brunswick, because this isn't right. If, if these officers did the right thing, and if they were so heroic and behaved so properly, why can't we know their names? It doesn't make any sense. Much the same way that if these officers are getting proper education and going to trainings and seminars, and those things happened in the past, it makes no sense that we can't know their names. This is not, this is America, we don't have secret police. It's not a secret who's a police, it shouldn't be a secret what training they get, and it shouldn't be a secret what actions they take under-
That's in your opinion, that they shouldn't get, that you shouldn't know their name of who's getting training? That's in your opinion. The prosecutor runs his department to make sure that his staff is safe at all times, whether they're on duty or off duty. And, and as far as knowing who's going to the, to the training and seminars, this is to keep them up to date on new ways to investigate crimes, and if they're involved in an investigation, they should not, the people that are involved in the investigation shouldn't know who the officers are. So he, that's how he feels, he has that right. I said this to you before, and I'll say it again, the prosecutor's off, is a, an appointed official by the governor. The only responsibility we, as Board of Chosen Freeholders of Middlesex County, have is that we provide the budget for them, whoever the prosecutor is. We don't have control of how he runs his department as far as an investigation. If you're not satisfied with a, a part of his investigation, then I recommend, like I said to you in the past, then you can speak to the Attorney, the New Jersey Attorney General.
Okay. Okay. I respect where you're coming from. I understand that, for better or worse, we don't elect our prosecutor, but you are my elected officials, and I'm expressing severe concern about the lack of transparency from that office. I don't think it's acceptable for a man's life to be taken and for his children, his family, to not know who did it and why. And quite frankly, the prosecutor has been averse to transparency. He refuses to acknowledge the material omissions he made on his financial disclosure forms. He refuses to give an update on this police killing, for which there's, it's really shady. This is just shady. You, you, you can't, that was April 9th. We are now in July, and the public has no more than a few sentences from the prosecutor's office about this. And these are the folks who are supposed to be investigating. We're supposed to be confident that the police are being policed in the same county where we had a corrupt sheriff for three decades?
Tom.
And that is an elected position?
Thank you.
I, I think you need to hold the prosecutor accountable. Use your power, please.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Please use your power. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karen Caskis. I live at 258 Manalapan Road in Spotswood. And before I begin, just so you know, I am just coming off a meeting with the Spotswood officials, nine of them, on this very same issue. Two of them stated seeing is believing. They've seen pictures, and they've conjured up images in their head, but when they actually came out to see what the problem is, we're getting a little more respect, I believe. First, I'd like to really start off by thanking the Middlesex County Engineering Department and the Road Department, because they were out on July 12th to do some road work on Manalapan Road, a county road, a problem where a storm drainage issue has existed for many years, 11 of those years I've been living there. Four, maybe five years ago, Freeholder Polos came out and helped us greatly, and did some repair. However, it just, the problem just continues, and it gets worse and worse each time. So what I would like to state is that currently, I believe it's a 24-inch pipe that lets out at the end of my property. I have a store, overflow stormwater drainage system, as do several of my neighbors, going behind our properties, along the side, across the front of my property, and letting out on Manalapan Road. The pipe is 24 inches. Even after the repair last week, there is currently about maybe five or six inches of that pipe showing, the rest is filled with silt. So you can imagine, luckily, we haven't had much rain, but you can imagine some of the downpours we did experience in the last few weeks, the water actually has to rise to above the grate and go in over the top. Currently, there is standing water in that area. I'm not sure which Freeholder is in charge of the roads. Is it Mr. Tamaro? Okay. I have some information that I can leave for you here. When I noticed this small amount of water at the time of the construction, I asked the supervisor, you know, why that water was there, since it hadn't rained. He said that it's backwash from the pipe that's going under the street. It simply is not, the water is not completely letting out. He wasn't sure what that reason would be. I had some engineer friend come out, and he told me that he felt that there was just too much silt in the pipe, so only so much water can go out, the rest sits. And that's after a very mild rain. It's not even a significant rain event. Okay? So that needs to be cleaned out. And in addition, over the years, when that piping system isn't working properly, it backs up under my driveway, along the side of my house, and in the back of my neighbors' properties, it actually flows over my driveway. I'm kind of like the, the end of the line for this. And my driveway is now collapsed. I have not been able to use it since March. Again, I do fault the county and the lack of maintenance at the drainage system on Manalapan Road where it lets out. People across the street have all kinds of issues. I can't speak for them. I'm trying to concentrate on myself and my neighbors on this, on my side of the street. It's a longstanding problem. The house was built 42 years ago. The previous homeowner had the same issue, was always trying to keep up with keeping it maintained. The county was good at coming out and maintaining. Spotswood does very little. They blame it on, you know, all kinds of other things. We had a meeting with them today. We think we got them a little straightened out. We reminded them of a few things. And in doing some of the construction last week, they did some dredging. Part of that ditch that runs across the front of my property is in the county right-of-way. So they did some dredging, simply because they had to get to the bottom of the pipe to put this new grate in. And they, from the road down, it sloped. They threw some stone in there. The stone is almost completely down now from the insignificant rainfall we've had. And you can see it in, in the bottom, and you can see that's just coming down the slope. They did impact my private property. It's all dirt. It looks disgusting, and it is just very unsightly, and I don't think that any of you would like to have that in front of your homes after you see the pictures. But again, come out, it's really a nice trip. And that needs to be repaired, just like you would repair any other project when you dig up somebody's, or along somebody's property for a sidewalk improvement or a road improvement. You put those nice walls in front of their house, and you see their property and everything. I'm not asking for that. I'm just asking you to come and take care of what was left behind. And I have had some assurance from the County Road Department, again, you know, very cooperative, that they're going to continue to monitor this, because I, you know, I kind of tell them, I, that they hear the same weather report I hear. So when, you know, a significant rain is coming, come and check and make sure there's not a lot of debris left over from, because you wouldn't believe what washes down.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
To be consistent with our rules, we have a five-minute rule to speak.
Okay.
But you can give your paperwork, whatever you want to give to Freeholder Tamaro, and we will have someone go there and look at it.
Perfect.
And then we'll get, we'll have between our engineering department and Khalid, our manager over there, and we'll see if we can rectify the problem.
Okay. And Mr. Khalid was very responsive. I'm not, you know, complaining about any of the employees or any of that. I'm just, you know, want to get this longstanding problem straightened out.
Well, like I said, we'll see what, what our, what our obligations are and what, if there's any responsibility in the department.
I'll stop over after the meeting.
Okay.
Anyone else in the public?
Move the close of public portion.
Second.